As I mentioned, we had proposed draft substitute bill that we handed out. And we, I just want for the record to state that the one change from the version received last night to the change that is you have before you right now is on page thirty-one of the bill, and that's the GMH section. So that is the only difference, and it's basically a formatting difference in which we, in section, in section six of that formatting section, what we did was the beginning of the chap, of that section adds the two provisions so that you show a total of ten point five million, five twenty-nine, nine-five-nine, and then you have a section A and a B, which are the way that it looked like yesterday. So it adds, it adds those two and recognizes that the total then is the ten point five. Okay? So that is the difference. Senator Rispio, Senator Adah.
Mr. Chairman, can you just clarify on page thirty-one, line three there? It's giving the governor authority to transfer, to pay for obligations incurred on or after October first, two thousand twelve, but no later than up to September of next year.
That's correct. And, and that was because we wanted, GMH's crisis includes this fiscal year, and because some of the revenues are allowed, the governor's allowed to access appropriations from FY two thousand fourteen, and the first portion of the bill here restricts the revenues contained in here and appropriated herein to be for expenses incurred after October first, two thousand and thirteen, which is the fiscal year fourteen. But for GMH's section, the governor's able to access the two thousand and fourteen revenues as well, and appropriations for GMH to pay for this last couple of months expenses at GMH. So it's only for that GMH section does that occur. Senator Ogden?
No, I, well, no, I, it's not clear yet. I'm just saying that, I mean, we've set a, a start date as to obligations as of October two thousand twelve, last year, up until, including obligations up to September of next year, as opposed to, as opposed to, let's say, September of two thousand thirteen.
Yes, and again, because the, the, the ten point five million dollar appropriation is inclusive of appropriations given to GMH that they're for two thousand and fourteen. But because the crisis at GMH also is, is now, before the end of two thousand thirteen, we're allowing him to use the appropriations for two thousand and fourteen to meet this last month of GMH expenses. That's why, and, and maybe I can ask Mr. Bolosse to speak to that a little more.
The main reason was also to allow the governor to transfer from fiscal year two thousand and fourteen appropriations for GMH fiscal year two thousand and fourteen expenses. So if we limited it to fiscal year thirteen only, then anything he transfers out of chapter five could only be used for fiscal thirteen expenses. We wanted to extend that to also allow it to be used for this, for fiscal fourteen as well.
Yeah. Speaker? All right, Senator Ogden, and then Speaker.
Maybe just to clarify, add more clarification, because we had the same situation with DOE. And what it is, is that one pay period, actually, the last pay period actually will go into two thousand and fourteen, and that's what the governor was saying, is a concern about the two, two more pay periods. And that then what that would do is that to be able to use the two thousand and fourteen of just a portion, it's like maybe one week of that pay period that, that two thousand and fourteen monies will kick in, for the governor to use them to be able to take care of that last pay period of the fiscal year.
This actually gives greater flexibility, because the GMH issue is much bigger than the overlapping pay periods. It's lack of ca, a lack of, of resources to pay basically the month of September. And so this allows him access to the FY two thousand and thirteen appropriations to care, and the fourteen, to bridge this last month of requirement at GMH in terms of their operating needs. Okay? So that's, we can come, when we go through the bill, when we get to that section, any additional questions, we'll, we'll be happy to, to respond to. But also, I was just trying to point out where the change from the version you got last night to what is in here today. Senator Ogden?
I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker, I was wondering whether you needed a motion for acceptance of the amendment, but it was already incorporated.
All right. Yeah, it's in here now, and then Senator Rispio's going to make the motion on.
Okay, I just, I just want to make a, a comment, and I think that there's one particular senator that continues to stand out in, in this body, in conjunction with a number of others, but continues to insist that GMH officials collect, collect, collect. And one of the things that we discovered yesterday was that certainly perhaps billing in a timely manner is also, should also be part of the equation. But I want to, to say this much with regards to that amendment, Mr. Speaker, is that although flexibility is being provided in fiscal year thirteen, and also to carry over to fiscal year fourteen, that please do not use this as a tool to refrain from aggressively collecting and, and billing the customers at GMH. Because that's definitely not the message that we're trying to impart to GMH and to the community in terms of providing additional, the possibility of additional resources to help our sole public hospital. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Ogden. Senator Rispio?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chairman. Before we recessed yesterday, you did provide us with a proposed substitute bill that would outline the spending priorities and, and the commitments that the legislature, together with the governor, will be making for the upcoming fiscal year. And so I move at this time that we accept bill number one, four-dash-S, as amended and further substituted in the committee hall, as our substitute version going forward.
Okay. On that motion, no objections? The bill's accepted?
Yeah, and, Mr. Speaker, given that we are all very aware of what this provision contained, and you did an excellent job at articulating the various iterations of the bill, I'm gonna move for purposes of rules of, the rules of engagement, that we go ahead and proceed to entertain these floor amendments that we have before us, that would allow senators to go in any part of the bill where these floor amendments, should they be adopted, be best placed. And so instead of going chapter by chapter, or section by section, or page by page, that I move that we just allow you the flexibility to allow us to navigate through this budget process by way of entertaining the floor amendments as they've been presented to us.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna ask, I'm, I'm gonna look at the floor amendments and just, just go through, call the amendments as they come through the bill in terms of numerical order, basically.
Yeah, but it does, and it means that you can bring us back or bring us forward, whatever you see fit in terms of the placement of these amendments.
All right.
And so I move for that flexibility at this time.
Okay. All right. No objections to that? The floor, of course, we, we went through chapter one the other day, and so that's done. We are in education, chapter two. We, I have Senator Yamashita, who has an amendment for that section. And so I will call on Senator Yamashita for her amendment in chapter two, part one, Guam Department of Education.
Should I go ahead, Speaker? Ben?
Yes. You may proceed, Senator, you recognize.
Thank you, Speaker Ben. Speaker Ben, this is an amendment that I proffered a few versions ago, I believe, and it would be where you believe best fits. It's chapter two, part one. The amendment has been circulated. Prior year obligations, the superintendent of the GDOE is authorized to use funds from appropriations made in section one, part one, chapter two of this act, to pay for prior year unpaid promised compensation due to unprocessed personal actions, authorized detail appointments, and court-ordered pay.
On that amendment, that would be to add a, a new section, basically, to chapter two, part one, education, and that would go as a, as a new section on page seventeen. Any amendment or deletion to that amendment? None? The amendment is accepted? So that takes us to University of Guam. There's no changes there? No amendments? The Guam Community College? No amendments? Educator Certification Commission? No amendments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can we just go with the amendments before us, so that way you don't have to go page by page?
Okay. I'm just trying to get them to, next amendment?
Chapter eight? Oh, no, thirteen, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, there was an amendment that was circulated a few minutes ago, and I believe inclusive of yourself, you have a copy before you, and it's to add a new section, and this is a proposal that was included in one of the previous budgets that was either entertained or submitted by this body. Mr. Speaker, it's to add a new section to chapter twelve, to read senior citizen centers, and it shall read, notwithstanding the provisions of eleven GCA subsection fifty-two oh five A, all bingo games or raffles being conducted in the senior centers by persons enrolled in the senior program shall not be taxable. Any income derived from the bingo games or sale of raffle tickets shall go towards activities of the senior citizens and for exclusive use by the senior citizens. So I think it's very clear in terms of the, the impact of this particular provision. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
All right. On that amendment, no objections? The amendment carries? Senator, Senator Limtiaco, then, same section would be?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I believe it's the miscellaneous provision section?
Right.
Which is, is that section third, section twelve?
Yes, chapter twelve.
Chapter twelve?
Yes. This will be a new section in that.
Correct. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to add an amendment which establishes the Made in Guam Incubator Program at the Airport Authority?
Okay.
Which will allow for additional revenue streams to be realized from entrepreneurs establishing businesses at the airport, and allowing access to our one point three million tourists that access the airport. This does not infringe on the main concessionaire's exclusive retail space, but takes advantage of the concourse area and the, the existing waiting areas that exist, and allows them different funding sources as established by GIDA through step programs or any other funding source that the, that GIDA can provide for them. And then a new section twenty-eight as well, that establishes the discount. You, we want to talk about this first?
Yeah, we just want to dispose of the first amendment, then. Any discussion or amendment to the Made in Guam Incubator Program amendment by Senator Limtiaco? Senator Ogden, I recognize you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and I, I want to commend Senator Limtiaco for proffering this particular amendment. I think the key phrase here, Mr. Speaker, and you've been a member of this body for many, many years, and have also been a proponent of products made in Guam, and that is, I consider, perhaps the biggest statement in this incubator program that is being proposed by the good senator. Because it gives us the opportunity to be able to assist our local entrepreneurs who decide to produce products that fit within that classification of made in Guam. And I understand that the standards remain the same, that no less than fifty percent of the production of that product or that service has to originate from Guam and from our own people. And that, it creates an environment where in fact it not only supports the production of many of our Made in Guam products, but it also gives our transiting customers at the airport, our incoming visitors and our outgoing visitors, and perhaps many of our people who are leaving the island to go visit family members, to be able to stop by possibly this program and avail themselves of some Made in Guam products and bring it to other family members who may be residing elsewhere. So I think that, that just in this ca, in this case, I want to just highlight that phrase, "made in Guam," because it's another way to be able to promote some of our product, our Guam products. And obviously, we do have an incubator program at the Chamor Village that, that certainly some of those vendors or entrepreneurs may be able to avail themselves of some additional opportunities at the airport facility. So I, I stand in support of this amendment. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Ogden. I have Senator Munia Barnes, Senator McCready, and then Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Barnes.
Sidoos Massey, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I just want to state for the record that I, to stand and rise in support of Senator Mike Limtiaco's introduction on this amendment for the Made in Guam Incubator Program. I do want to say for the record that when this bill was introduced and it had its fair hearing, that there were some concerns in reference to how this, this program will be implemented at the, at the airport, as it relates to how the airport runs at the, the concessions, but more importantly, as it relates to the bond covenants. There was a commitment on the markup hearing, also knowing that there may be a similar program that is being run right now, but I'd be the first to tell you, in the spirit of cooperation, but more importantly, to advocate for our, our local entrepreneurs, our local community, our local, buying local, thinking local, supporting local. I think that this program is, is a real important continuing step for truly advocating for Guam products. I also want to say that the, the program that will be instituted, this incubator program, as it is created here, will talk about the, the makeup of the rules and regulations, its product mix, making sure that there is a, a advisory board, a committee with, that instills a lot of expertise, and also programming to look at and ascertain additional grants and additional resources, additional money to sustain this program moving forward. But I would like to ask the good author of the, of this amendment, as it relates to the advisory board, if there was any concerns about maybe putting or adding to that, I don't know if the mix-up will make it an even number or an odd number, but may, maybe making one of the product participants to be a part of that advisory board, or, or somebody who, who has an interest in this to be a part of the makeup and not just, so it'd be a true balance of, of having both the local community, the, the, the business community, and also looking at the participants in there and having a fair, how would you say, a, a fair accountability or transparency as it relates to hearing their concerns also, have them be a part of that, and, and, and what his sentiments would be to that. Senator Mike?
Senator Limtiaco, will you yield to that question?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, we had both the GVB, the, the Airport Authority in to, as it, as during the discussions prior to this bill, that made up this advisory board. And although the, the matter did come up, there was no real formal way of determining which one of these potential vendors would be, would be included, or how they would be otherwise selected. So it would be somewhat subjective if we were just to choose any one of these vendors, provided maybe they establish a group among themselves. So I think that Senator Barnes is on the right track, and maybe if these vendors do like establish a co-op and they can elect one of these presiding members, we could always amend it. But I'm, I'm concerned that there is no formal way to select this member that would sit on this advisory board at the time. So in the event that there is a co-op that is produced among these Made in Guam vendors, that yes, I think it would be appropriate to have them on the board. And I think that maybe if the, if the program gets off the ground, that, that it could be established, and we can amend it at that point to do just, just that. But, but both the GVB and the, and the airport were actively involved in the creation of this advisory board language. So they, this is, this was the language that was acceptable at the time, that was discussed. And I think that when, when in the event a co-op board of some sort is developed, that it, it would be beneficial to add them to the advisory board.
Senator Barnes?
Thank you, thank you, Senator Limtiaco. I really appreciate it, and maybe, maybe as, as the program truly gets implemented, then maybe we can work on, on, on having that provision be inserted in then. So I'll go ahead and wait. But the other question that I may have for the good author is, as we know, GIDA is the one who, who administers and watches the program as it relates to the Guam Product Seal, and maybe we can put an amendment in there to make the administrator of GIDA, who oversees the Guam Product Seal, be a part of that advisory committee, if that's okay?
Is that a motion?
I'll make that a motion, then.
Okay.
That to, to, to the administrator of the Guam Economic Development Authority also be a part of the advisory.
The advisory board. So the motion is to add to the advisory board on page two, subsection B, the Guam Economic Development Authority's executive directors that, or whatever the title is for the head of that agency, be a, be a member of the advisory board? Yeah. Okay. So there's a motion to amend the advisory board membership to include the Guam Economic Development Authority Executive Director. Senator Ogden on that motion?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to extend my endorsement of the proposed amendment. I think that whenever we have programs such as Guam Product Seal, now it's under the direct supervision and management of the Guam Economic Development Authority. I do know that there's a subsequent provision that would establish grants out of the GIDA, and for them to be able to pursue funding sources, but in the same token, it is the advisory board that would have to enforce the compliance with the Guam Product Seal, or Made in Guam products. So I think it's extremely appropriate that at least if not the executive manager of the Guam Economic Development Authority, his or her designee, to be a member of this, so that they can be so-called the overseer or the watchdog of the compliance with the Guam Product Seal program. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
All right. I have Senator Tom Adah on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I, if the author would yield. I have a question on, on section one, four, zero, two, on the first page there.
Senator Adah, may I, there was an amendment by Senator Munia Barnes?
Oh, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll hold on till that comes up.
Okay, I'll recognize you afterwards, Senator. On the amendment, Speaker Wompak?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, I had spoken to the, the author of this amendment, and because we're, we're talking about, you know, made in Guam, things that are locally produced here, and, and to help them, and it's a great idea, and, and this, I, but he's not necessarily in favor of what I wanted to, to discuss, because I can understand that in the advisory board, you've got the airport people who are there, you have the general manager or a member from the Visitors Bureau, and now we're putting in, and then we've got a member designated by the master concier, concessionaire, and, and GIDA. And that would, of course, would be the fourth member, if I'm correct, by reading this. And, but we're missing somebody even really very critical to, to this, because if you look on top of that second page, where it says there that, you know, the authorities to make available to each vendor to showcase the Chamor culture, and that the authority may collaborate, may collaborate with the Department of Chamor Affairs, and, and, but yet this whole thing is about, yes, I realize that, in economic development, but it's also involves, again, our culture, things that are made in Guam. And that has been a very contentious discussion, that in a recent legislation introduced by the vice speaker and I and several members, is that this is becoming a problem here in Guam, what's made, in Guam, what's, to use the fact that it's made here in Guam, and to leave now, of course, the one department that is a part of this group, which is the Department of Chamor Affairs, aside from GIDA, and because the numbers are an even number, four members to the advisory board, that, you know, of course, I have no objections to GIDA, I understand that, but I want to kind of throw this out to see how everybody feels, that I think that rather if not a, to, to break the tie here is to add, amend this, her amendment, to also say then, and a member from the Department of Chamor Affairs. From the co-op? I mean, you see, I'm sorry, I didn't even hear that conversation that's going on, and, and I know there's several things that also I wanted to throw in, just again for discussion purposes, is that we have a bill, I mean, a law, that allows for even persons with disability to participate at the airport, to be a vendor, to have a, a kiosk at the, the airport, and at no cost to persons with disabilities, and that was patterned after federal law of the Blind Vendors Act at the airport. So if everybody remembers, as soon as you land in Hawaii International Airport, you see the blind vendors there. They're selling newspapers, and at no cost to them.
Speaker?
So, I mean, so, I know, I know, I, okay. So, thank you anyway, but I'm just saying that, see, this is the kind of conversation that we really need to have.
I definitely agree. Senator Rispio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and it's because of the kind of conversation that we're having right now, that, that I think that this bill still needs to be vetted. There's a bill before the legislature, it's been referred to Senator Barnes's committee, and she's committed to a markup hearing. And given that senators still have a lot of questions on, on this bill, and of course, it's not about the intent or whether it's worthwhile or not, it's just making sure that we don't miss anything in the mad rush to, to put this in the budget bill at the eleventh hour. And so, so I rise in opposition to the amendment, and I, and I think that this is something that should continue to go through Senator Barnes's committee, which she committed to a markup hearing. And so I just want to state my opposition, given all the discussion that's just ensued.
On the main amendment?
On the main amendment, and the need to have more vetting of, through the committee.
Okay. So I have, let's go back to the amendment by Senator Munia Barnes, which is to add GIDA as a member of the advisory board, and we'll dispose of that amendment, and then we'll come back to the main amendment itself. So, any additional discussion on the amendment, to the amendment, which would add GIDA as a member of the advisory board? Any objections? None? That amendment passes. We are now on the main amendment as amended, and Senator Dastina Munia Barnes still has the floor.
And I do respect the previous speaker, Mr. Chair, but I just want to say, in, in moving this program forward and knowing that it would be a, a, a big plus to the community as we support local, think local, and buy local, I think that this program is worthy of being put in this, and, and I, I just want to say that I support this amendment, I think it's important, and I just ask my colleagues to support the same. Sidoos Massey?
Thank you very much, Senator Munia Barnes. I have now Senator Yamashita on the main amendment as amended, and then Senator Siniklas.
Thank you very much, Speaker Ben. I stand in full support of this amendment, and I just wanted to add that in, in addition to made in Guam, hopefully this, this will really lead way towards having a whole part of our airport experience of being grown on Guam, where every visitor who leaves can walk away with a pineapple or a papaya. And so I know these are products that are being developed here, but the vision is really to foster the agricultural growth, and so the papayas and pineapples can lea, a flavor of Guam leaves with our visitors. So I just see this as a part of a vision. So thank you very much, Speaker Ben.
Thank you very much, Senator Yamashita. Senator Siniklas? Senator Siniklas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I first want to, uh, state that, uh, as Chair of the Committee, as oversight of the airport and in the spirit of compromise, I too rise in support of the amendment so that we can move forward with getting a budget passed for our people. I do, um, agree with the sentiments that were expressed by, um, Speaker Wampat that, um, including the, um, director or his designee of the Department of Chamor Affairs would, would, um, ensure that the, um, the Chamor aspect is, is never lost in, um, in the development of this program. I don't think that it'll be too damaging to have, um, an additional member on the board. And I understand that there is an intent to, uh, put, um, a, a vendor on the board as well. Um, if the intention, um, to do that in the future, which will require, um, an amendment to this, if the intention is to do that and we want to make sure that we have an odd number, we can always put two members, two vendors, um, on the board, uh, of, uh, two vendors on this advisory board in order to keep the numbers odd. Um, but in the interim, in the absence of that amendment, I think that it's important that we not only have a, a fifth member in order to break any potential ties, but that that fifth member also be the, um, Director of Chamor Affairs or his designee. So I would like at this time to, um, go ahead and proffer that amendment.
Senator Siniklas is, uh, amending the amendment as amended, as a new amendment to add the Department of Chamor Affairs. Uh, what is it? President, chief executive or, I'm not sure, the title?
The Director of, or equivalent.
Okay, or equi- or designee, right?
Or designee.
Okay. So the, the, the DC, the Department of Chamor Affairs head, um, or his designee. On that amendment, no objections? The amendment passes. Any other speakers? Speaker Wampat on the main amendment?
Yes. And, and the main amendment-
I'm sorry, Senator Ada?
I'm sorry.
Yes. My apologies. Speaker?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, um, you know, I echo the, um, the concerns that were raised by a previous speaker, um, that the, the need to vet this further in committee. For example, I'm, I'm concerned, I'm concerned for several reasons. One, um, now the executive manager, in addition to, uh, being responsible for running our airport and everything that makes that airport a good functioning facility, now he is going to be the supervisor of this program. Uh, and, um, and even to the extent he, uh, under section 1403 on page two, the program should be under the overall supervision of the executive manager. The section 1404, the, uh, the mix of products shall be determined by the executive manager. And, you know, I, I, I just, uh, I, I just have concerns about now basically, um, having the executive manager, um, having to get involved in, in, in these sort of things other than, than making sure that that facility is functioning the way it should to move passengers. The other concern that I have is that, um, I, I think at the time when this bill was initially introduced, it was, um, at the time duty free was there. It has, there's now a new concessionaire up there. And we don't know what the, the details are of that contract. I do re- I do remember, uh, in reviewing the request for proposal, uh, that was issued by the port, uh, there was language in there to the effect that, uh, that, for example, I believe if additional retail space becomes available, I believe the master concessionaire has first dibs at, uh, at grabbing that space. Um, there's language in here that says that the master concessionaire shall not offer products that directly compete with the program participants. And I'm one, you know, I'm wondering, have we, have we had a chance to take a look at, does that sort of restriction go contrary to the agreement that has already been entered into? Because essentially that master concessionaire is the, is the, the retailer for the airport. I, I'm just concerned that there's enough things in here, um, that may, may be reason enough to, to veto this budget bill. Because, you know, it's, we're, we're putting something in there, we're putting something in this bill that may be going contrary to a contract that was just recently entered into. And, and I guess my question to the author is, 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 is he familiar enough with the, the provisions of the contract, uh, to be confident that none of the provisions in here will go contrary, uh, to those contract provisions? Uh, and, and, you know, and end up in vetoing this bill?
Is that a question you wish the author to yield?
Yes, please.
Okay, yes. Senator Limtiake, would you yield to that question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And I, I appreciate the, uh, the, the questions of concern. And, um, o- once again, prior to introduction of this bill, the airport authority as well as GVB and all the concerned parties were actively involved in the creation of this legislation. So it was not done in a vacuum. It was done with their full, um, input and the bill was structured so that it would not infringe on the main concessionaire. Now, now keep in mind, the exclusivity of the main concessionaire refers to the real estate that they currently occupy. We're not talking about putting the, and, and what we envisioned for this program are small kiosks spread throughout the airport. And, and if most of you have seen through the airport, there's not a lot of shopping or anything to do outside of that first area that you enter and you pass the main concessionaire. So we're talking about these small kiosks along the causeways, the walkways to and from the terminals. And we're also talking about these small kiosks within the, the waiting areas at the gates. Um, so, a- and in regards to the veto, um, side of it, it was in the governor's initial bill that he sent down. Okay? So this legislation was part of the miscellaneous provisions, uh, in the governor's bill that he sent down. And, and I just want to add, Mr. Chair, that, you know, we're talking about a lot of expenditures in our budget and we're, we're, we're looking at ways to increase revenue. And this is one small potential way of doing so. So I, I think if we look at it from the, in, from the aspect of attempting to grow the economy and providing opportunities for some of our entrepreneurs on Guam that have the Guam Product Seal, I, I think that we should be looking at that big picture side. But i- in, in relation to the, um, uh, to the involvement in the authority, the Guam International Airport Authority as well as GVB, um, they were actively involved in the formation of this legislation. So they're very aware of the provisions in it and they're very aware of how the provisions were to be put forward so that it does not infringe on any of the current agreements or ongoing agreements regarding the main concessionaire. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Limtiake. Senator Ada, did you wish to continue?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, I, I understand that, uh, I think there was something like 25,000 square feet that the new concessionaire, master concessionaire has control of. But I, I recall distinctly that there was a provision in that RFP which said that if there's additional space to be made available, that really the right of first refusal is with the master concessionaire. So, and, and now that the author has just indicated that these, um, these kiosks are going to be right there in the causeway and the walkway where all these customers are, I, I just don't see the, the master concessionaire sitting back and saying, okay, go ahead and have at it. Uh, I'm just really concerned, uh, that unless we're familiar with how, uh, this, this, this program, um, in the, um, juxtaposed with the, the big master concessionaire contract, that, that it really puts, you know, it, I'm, I'm afraid it's going to upset the apple cart. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. Any other speakers? I would recognize, uh, this, the vice speaker and then, I'm, Senator Speaker and then the vice speaker. Did you raise your hand? Oh, I'm sorry. The speaker. Speak. Okay. Senator Speaker?
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Chairman. And Ms. Chairman, in addition to those comments by the previous speaker regarding the additional duties of the executive manager, you know, I'm, I'm deeply concerned that we're giving unfettered authority to the same individual who now gets to decide that the mix of products, uh, what those mix of products shall be. And, uh, why, if GIDEA is the one that's doing the Guam Product Seal program, uh, why then wouldn't it be GIDEA that can decide what's best to be suited up at the airport that best reflects, uh, you know, the Chamor culture and everything that the Guam Product Seal, uh, hopes to perpetuate? And so the other thing, it says in 1404 where it says the master concessionaire shall not offer products that directly compete with a program participant, again, how is this determined? Is it going to be determined on a first come, first basis? Or if the executive manager has a cozy relationship with, uh, a vendor who has the Guam Product Seal license, can they get to decide? Are we going to be creating a monopoly by allowing one individual to decide what kind of concessions can be sold up there? And it also says, uh, further that, that the GIA is allowed, shall be charged up to the extent that they're allowed, shall be charged the lowest possible percentage of gross sales for up to two years. Is this a violation of the bond covenant? Uh, we've heard from time and time again that the airport cannot, uh, give away its revenues for non-airport related activity. And this is clearly a non-airport related activity that we're vesting a lot of the, the duties and responsibilities to the executive manager that's tasked with, with performing those, uh, airport related, uh, activities. And now we're also saying, because it's a good program, let's just give them the, a deal for the concession space. And, and I, I can go on record saying that the former tenant of the airport authority was really opposed to this, uh, legislation. I don't doubt that the current tenant, uh, doesn't feel the same way. And then in section 1406, it talks about a maximum grant award, not to exceed $10,000, but there's no cap. How much money are we making available, uh, for this grant award? And how many vendors are we talking about? And so we want to talk about fiscal responsibility and budgeting. We need to be clear, how much, uh, budget are we providing for? This whole thing, Mr. Chairman, is open-ended. And so I plead with my colleagues that, you know, the speaker's going to be calling us into session right after this session. And why, why does this have to be addressed in a budget bill when, when the matter is before a committee? There, there's a reason why Senator Barnes went on record saying that she'd like to have a markup meeting. Because this is complicated. It's complicated, it's complex, it's not cut and dry. And if we're putting this in to accommodate someone so they can vote for the budget, why are we, why are we even going down that road? You know, so this amendment doesn't go in, the, the mover doesn't vote for the bill? You know, I, I just don't support this amendment in this budget bill. And, and we already see that the, that the chairperson of, uh, jurisdiction is committed to a markup hearing. And now today she supports the bill, but to put this in the budget bill where there could be some concerns with the bond covenant, there could be some concerns with the contract that was just executed between the airport and the master concessionaire? And now we're going to have all these different kiosks there and then we're going to have one person decide who gets to be the vendor and what products they get to sell? And on top of that, we're giving them $10,000 to do this? And so is this to promote small business development or is it really to put money in some small businessman's pocket? And so I rise in opposition to this, uh, bill being placed in the budget bill. And if you want to have more discussions, we will. And we'll just continue to expose the flaws in this, uh, piece of legislation. And so I, I ask that we exercise caution and prudence and we take this thing out of the budget bill, not put it in there, this doesn't belong in the budget bill. And we go through the, uh, uh, committee process and let's hear from the master concessionaire. Let's hear from the executive manager why, if he thinks he has the additional time to do something like this. And let's hear from him if this is a violation of the bond covenant. We're, we're now saying, take, take prime retail space and give the best possible discount. What if the master concessionaire comes back and says, hey, I want parity, I want the same deal? I, I'm offering local products out of my concession, so why don't you cut me some slack? And then while you're at it, give me $10,000 for each, each, each space the size of a kiosk and supplement my, my, uh, contract up there? This is very problematic, Mr. Speaker. I'm not willing to put this in just so we can, we can get another vote for the budget bill. Too much is at stake here.
Thank you very much, Senator Speaker. I have Speaker Wampat on the main amendment.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, um, there, there are several things that, you know, after reviewing, of course, uh, this amendment that I'd like to, to highlight that things, to, to correct some things as well and to, to amend, um, of course, in the very front, because we're talking about the airport, that one, of course, legal counsel makes that the technical correction as to the name of the airport, that it should be used correctly, that it's not the Guam International Airport, that is the Wampat International Airport Guam. So that's the very first thing. The second, and the second page is on the, where it says the authorities urge to make available, that's the line, one, two, three, four, five, so six, where the authority then where it says may collaborate. And since we've made them, uh, the director a member, then it's shall, I want to change from may to shall, that collaborate with the Department of Chamor Affairs.
On an amendment to change, uh, may to shall? Any objections? Any discussion? None? The amendment carries?
Uh, the other is on section 1403, where the program shall under the, be under the overall supervision, supervision of the executive manager and shall conform to all applicable local and federal. Now it says rules and regulations, but there are laws. Uh, we have a local law, basically, that says, when you ruled me, of course, out of order, but not quite, but, you know, you were nice about it, but, uh, to say to stick to the subject. But in this case, there is a local law that allows for persons with disabilities to be able to, uh, access space at the airport, and it's a law. So, and, and if somehow, you know, and I mean, I can understand where the two previous speakers were saying, because you're right, I'd like to be able to fix this so that then we can incorporate what the, the spirit of the law for persons with disabilities, because I don't want to forget them, that they have this opportunity to go up there, to have a kiosk, to have space, floor space at the airport and not to be rejected. Because one, the first priority would be that new, uh, big contract that they have with LOTI. Second will be for this. But then what? Then we push again persons with disabilities to give them an opportunity to become, you know, financially independent? I just don't want them to be forgotten. I don't want them to be pushed to the side and given, like, exactly what happened in this case with Mr. Peter Nelson, when he had persons with disabilities start to, uh, produce and, and to package and sell, uh, turkey, tuna tur- tuna jerky. And you know what they did with the persons with disabilities? They put them in a corner so far away where the passengers don't even see them. And, and that's why they were not successful. They couldn't continue. And I just don't want that to happen. Because we're now, I, I'm just thinking with the first two priorities, again, we're going to get these individuals to be put in a place probably where all the carts are, you know, or whatever. I don't know. But I, they, if anybody should be given first rights of refusal, should be these individuals, persons with disabilities. So I don't know how to fix this. I mean, I'd like to say to put in, of course, add the word before rules, laws, local laws, of course, and federal laws, but this is a federal law, the Blind Vendors Act. But it does, it still doesn't help because it can be, they can be lost in this particular amendment. So, and, and for the insufficient time to be able to see how we can pull out that language to make sure it's here and to make reference of it. And I don't know how we can do this. I can ask legal counsel and, and do an amendment that, you know, it, it speaks to that particular law, that federal law and local law, that it gets the same preference or rights or consideration, uh, to be able, uh, to operate, uh, at the airport.
So-
It's two. So the first one is laws, to add the laws after government.
Add, add laws after government?
Yes. That's the first one.
Okay. On the amendment to add the word laws after government on the second line of section 14, 103? No objections? That amendment carries?
Okay, thank you. And the second would be if legal counsel then can at least just list, you know, after this, how they would fit in to recognize those two laws, the federal law and a local law, that, you know, it be then, uh, that since it's under the supervision of the executive manager, that this new executive manager now would really have to go and read up on that law, on those two laws to make sure then that persons with disabilities will also be considered in providing space- be considered in providing space for them at the airport.
So, the amendment is then, after, at the end of the sentence, the legal counsel would be directed to cite the applicable stat, local and federal statute with reference to preferences for vendors of persons with disabilities. Is that correct? Okay. So, on that am... Okay. In order to kind of answer that question, legal counsel needs additional time to, because the question then is, do we adopt the federal laws on preferences for this program? And so, we need to kind of take a look at what's in the federal statute, so that we understand. So, can we come back to that amendment? All right? I have Senator Siniklas then, on, we're now on the main amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a question for the author of the amendment on the, the final page, second to the last page of the total, where it's subsection 1406, where it states that grants may be made available to participating businesses. My question was, where is the funding source for those grants going to be coming from?
Senator Siniklas has a question to Senator Limtiaco. Would you yield to that question, Senator Limtiaco?
Yes, Mr. Chair. And I thank the retiring speaker for the question. Initially, Mr. Chair, we actually had money that was associated with the tourist attraction fund. And with changes in the budget bill, the, all those funding sources were used for other appropriation, so we had to take that section out of the bill. So, in relation to the grant program, it's, it's permissive, in the sense that they may, may be made available for these participating businesses. So, in the event that the funding source does become available, or if there's any new federal grants that do, do become available, that GITA would be responsible, responsible for administering it. But this does not appropriate money towards these grants at this time.
Senator Siniklas, you may proceed then.
Yeah, but I'm just concerned now, Mr. Chairman, because the, this base, this language basically says that grants can come from anywhere. And so, you know, I mean, the governor, the governor could have 10% transfer authority, can he transfer money from the general fund to go to a grant to GITA, to go to these incubator? I'm just concerned that the grants don't have a specified funding source, so I'm, I'm actually quite concerned. I, I don't, I don't quite know how to proceed at this time with that. I'd like to go ahead and defer, and perhaps I'll come back to it in a minute, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any other speakers on the main motion? Senator Siniklas, I know you said you wanted to come back. Speaker Wampat wanted to come back. There's being no other speakers, so...
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I can, I can go ahead and come back. You know, if, the intention of this, of this amendment, just to go into the budget bill to kind of get this program started, we've already had some dialogue exchanged, that amendments are going to be proffered at a later date in order to further clarify certain things, such as getting a co-op together for a vendor to be on advisory board. So, I would like to make a motion then to strike section 1406, and we can come back and revisit that section at a later date with a different piece of legislation, so that it's, it's more, it's more clear where the funding source for these particular grants will be coming from. So, I'd like to make a motion to strike section 1406, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion by Senator Siniklas then.
Objection, Mr. Chair. Once again, the grant, go ahead.
There, there is a motion. I'll recognize then those who want to speak on the motion. So, the motion is to strike section 1406, and I'll recognize Senator Limtiaco, and then I have Senator Rispio, Senator Yamashita, and the speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, once, once again, these grants are, are, once again, the, the initial funding source for these grants were the tourist attraction fund. And in the event that the tourist attraction fund does have excess money available, maybe this body at that point in time can put it back in here, in the initial bill, in order to make those grants available. But they are permissive in, in, in the sense that it's not, the terminology is, may be made available. So, in the, in the event that these grants do become available, that GITA is authorized to administer them. So, it is permissive, there's nothing that's requiring of the grants, and therefore, that's why there's no specific appropriation for it. So, you know, I'd, I'd ask the mover of the amendment to please reconsider, in the sense that it's, it is permissive. And, and once again, we're, we're trying to promote small business growth, and with all of the expenditures that we have in the budget and in upcoming fiscal year 15, all we're trying to do here is grow the business opportunities to our local vendors. And I would think that all of our colleagues in here would, would want to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Limtiaco. I have Senator Rispio on the amendment to strike 1406.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chair. Ms. Chair, I rise in support of the amendment, and it's even more concerning, again, that there's no funding source for this $10,000 per grant. Earlier, I pointed out that there's no cap in the amount of grants they can give. Now, there is actually no funding source, and even though the author of this amendment, or the main amendment, says that it's, it's permissive, if funds become available, well, right now, if he knows that the funds are not available, then why even have a program? Which speaks to my earlier point, that this whole thing should be vetted through the committee, and this is nothing more than just another empty promise. If you want to talk about how much we support this kind of program, and the small incubator program up at the airport, and how much we're going to give prime retail airport space to these concessionaires, and how much we may be violating the bond covenant, or how we may be violating the contract right now between the master concessionaire and the, and the airport authority, now we're saying that these grant monies may be available, but then yet, there's no funding source. You know, maybe we're adding insult to injury for those small businesses who want to have this kind of a program available for them, and they see a $10,000 amount that may be come available, but there is no funding source. And so, again, this is, while there, while it's good intentions, I just think that, I support removing this, number one. And number two, I support just having this whole discussion in the committee, where we soon will have a legislative session called by the speaker, and so we can discuss the budget. Nothing that we're talking about deals with the budget. If they talk about the crisis of GMH, and, and the need to provision adequately for tax refunds, I don't see how this whole discussion pertains to the budget for, for next fiscal year. And so, I, I support the amendment to take out this section out, and I stand opposed to the entire amendment.
Thank you very much, Senator Rispio. Senator Yamashita?
Thank you very much, Speaker Ben. While absolutely it'd be ideal to always have a funding source identified, so that we can move forward purposely, and knowing how the timeline can be realized, the, the phrase there that says, shall jointly develop a grant program, the notion of developing really can, you can say that that's where the identification of funding is really going to be worked on. The language structure, the, the idea that the program is being bound by statute, really does give a sense of hope for people who want to support such a made-on-Guam incubator program, or grown-on-Guam incubator program. So, I understand the concerns about, we're saying something, but the money's not there. But at the same time, when people see that this is bound by, by statute, there can be some encouragement for grantors, for folks who have some money, to, to say, we want to support that, and how can we come forward and make these pledges, or invest in such a type of program? Thank you, Speaker Ben.
Thank you very much, Senator Yamashita. Madam Speaker?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. You know, initially, I know, when you, when I was reading this on the surface, that, you know, something I really can support. And the more that I think about it now, and the more we're having these discussions, and the fact that even in my earlier attempt with an amendment to make reference, to cite, rather, the federal law and the local law, so that then we don't leave out, you know, this group of individuals that somehow always falls through the cracks. And, and now I'm thinking, yes, I mean, it's a great selling point, is a small business, to grow small businesses. But these are individuals who, you know, young entrepreneurs, or, or whatever, but entrepreneurs anyway, that would have some means somehow to get started. But the ones who really don't are the ones that, like I said, are individuals with disabilities. So, it's far-reaching, in the sense that we want to help new businesses, we want to help small businesses to grow, but it's even far more reaching when we can be inclusive of these individuals. And I'd like to be able to, honestly, and I'm not saying I'm totally against this whole idea, but I have to take now this position, as others have indicated, is that I really would like to now sit down with the author, sit down with the, the chairperson and others, and Senator Yamashita also, who's been really, you know, a, in the forefront of fighting for persons with disabilities, is that we can work this with, you know, in the markup, is to, to work on using the language to make it successful, not just for regular small businesses, but more importantly, with individuals with a disability. Because can you imagine that? And we'll find somehow monies? Yes, especially, you know, to help these individuals defray their startup costs, because they really don't have anything. This is sometimes just their only means of survival, only means for their livelihood. And that's why I don't want to leave them out of the loop. So, I would have then to, I mean, not have to, but I, I do then support the amendment proffered by Senator Siniklas, to delete, only with the caveat, of course, is that I want to, to work on this, really, as a standalone bill.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I have Senator Doinas next on the amendment, which is to strike section 1406.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to just start, once again, I guess it was on the main amendment, I should be saying this, but I'll just be quick about it. I want to commend the author for his efforts here. Mr. Chairman, I, I believe that I support him also in this objection. I believe that, you know, we just saw the airport sell their, their bonds, and there's going to be the corridors now, that are, and the dividers that are going to be eliminated once the construction is completed in that phase, freeing up, you know, thousands of more square feet than, than used to exist because of the commingling issues. I, you know, I, I think we have a board up there, we have a general manager, we have a team that I believe is very capable of making these type of decisions, and in working with the master concessionaire, and, and, and all the other stakeholders there. And, you know, the, the mover of this, this amendment is correct. I mean, this is a revenue generating potential that, that we have not necessarily, in particular, identified within this budget. So, I join him in his objection. I think sometimes we don't get enough, give enough credit for those, you know, who are very capable managers, and put in places to make decisions, and, and our, our ability here to keep an eye on things as well. So, I join the author and his opposition, and, and I, and I encourage our folks to, to give a little bit more credence to those who have capability of, of managing our government resources. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Doinas. Any other speakers on the amendment to the amendment that was offered by Senator Siniklas? Then I'll allow this mover of the amendment to close.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I very much support local businesses, and the intention of this overall amendment is very promising. I also think that grants will be a good thing. I think that being able to give grants to help these things start up and, and thrive and become successful would be a very, very good thing to do. The purpose of my amendment is not to in any way stymie any of that, but rather to make sure that the language that we're going to ultimately place with regards to this program is, is thorough and tight enough to make sure that, you know, there's the money that we want to provide for these grants is going to be coming from a source that's identified. I think that, and I agree with the, the individual who objected to the amendment, that it is in fact permissive, and that is where the problem lies, Mr. Chairman. It's overly permissive. It says that grants may be available, and it doesn't specify from where, and therefore, grants can come from anywhere. You know, does that mean that the governor can take his 15% reserve on education, and take money from there, and transfer it to GITA, to issue it as a grant for this program? We need to make sure that we tighten up the language, so that when we are issuing these grants, we know where the money is coming from, and we're not just creating an overly permissive section that's going to be taking money from all kinds of places that need the money for other purposes, and using them for these grants, because as was also stated by Senator Rispio, there's no limit either. This section does not limit the number of grants. So theoretically speaking, we can give out $10 million in grants from any source available throughout the government, and that's going to have a very negative impact on all the other areas where this money is taken from. So, I, I support the intention of the bill, I'm, I'm sorry, the amendment. I think that by striking this section, we can responsibly come back and make an amendment in the future at a later time to put a really well-vetted grant program in place that we can all get behind. But as this, as this language currently stands, I think that it would be more prudent for us to move this process forward, and to go ahead and include it in the budget, to at this time, just delete this section, and then address it at a later date. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. There's been an objection to the amendment. I'm going to call for a vote. The motion, again, and the amendment is to strike section 1406. All in favor of striking one section 406, please raise your hand. Motion fails. Any other speakers on the main motion? Senator Siniklas on the main motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is another section here that, that got my, the wheels in my head turning when it was brought up by a previous speaker, about what if there was any kind of question with regards to the executive director's full authority to be able to decide product mix, and to decide vendors? And so, I wanted to kind of tighten up the language on the advisory board, because I believe that it'll be, it'll be more fair for us to offer an adjudication process, so that in the event that the decisions of the executive manager are in any way appealed, that there is actually a mechanism in place for that appeal to be addressed, and for those decisions to be overturned or amended in, in the interest of fairness to whoever might have a problem with the decisions made by the executive manager. And so, I wanted to amend subsection 1404B, and instead have it go from being an advisory board to being a governing board, and to strike the sections there that say advisory within that section, and change it to governing, and to add language at the end of that subsection, and the language will state, "which shall include an adjudication process to address appeals relative to determinations made by the executive manager in the administration of this program." I can go ahead and proffer the language to the committee.
Yes, please.
But the intention of this amendment is, basically, the whole section there at the end talks about the board shall develop its procedures for carrying out this function. I want to make sure that in those procedures is an adjudication process to address appeals relative to any determinations made by the executive managers, that in the event that, you know, somebody wants to, you know, sell something, and they're upset that the executive manager isn't allowing them to sell it, they can appeal to this board, and at least have an adjudication process in place to overturn the executive manager's decision and be able to sell. Because as it's currently written, we're trying to promote local businesses, and we're trying to promote local products, but ultimately, the decision of what gets promoted, and what business is able to, to go into the airport, is all going to be vested within the singular decision of the executive manager, with no adjudication process whatsoever for anybody to appeal his decisions, and, you know, to, to get any kind of answer as to whether or not his decision was, was fair and consistent. So, that's the amendment that I would like to proffer at this time for subsection 1404B.
All right. The amendment is to make it a governing board, and to include language which Senator Siniklas has... has, will make sure that we get in writing so that we can give that to the clerk as well as I remember. But the idea is that it shall be, there shall be an adjudication process to appeal the decisions of the general manager with regards to the operations of the program.
Objection, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'm just concerned that the authority already has a board, and whether or not we are able to have two governing boards, I know this is in relation to this program at the board, but once again, they have a board already, and I'm afraid that when the airport was originally involved in this, that the advisory board was just to help them kind of with this program from an advisory perspective. I still think that the board would have overall governing authority on the executive manager as it states or as it is already. So I'm concerned that by establishing a governing board in this capacity may have some kind of conflicts between the existing board at the airport already. I am not sure of it, but, you know, I'd like to just voice my objection and call for the vote.
I'm going to allow additional discussion on it, if you don't mind. I'm going to recognize Senator Rispicio and then Senator Ogden on the amendment.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing discussion on this bill, as opposed to what the previous speaker wanted to just close debate and call for the vote. I rise in support of the amendment, and if the opposition to the amendment is because the mover doesn't want any conflict between the executive manager and the airport authority board, he should also recognize that his own amendment divests all the authority into one individual. And so I'm trying to follow the arguments against the amendment where the argument is that they don't want to create conflict between the airport authority board and advisory board and the executive manager, being that the airport authority board oversees the executive manager, but in this case, they give unfeathered unilateral authority to one individual. And so for, and I always want to just debate the facts and stick to the facts, and the fact is that this amendment, if it's put in the Budget Act and the Budget Act becomes law, it would divest all of this authority to one individual, and there'll be no appeals process. So again, it leads to my earlier question, why are we giving one individual unilateral authority to decide what concessions can be up there, what products they can sell? And if there's another small business individual who has a certified product that's been certified to the Guam Product Seal Program, what recourse does that small business owner have to appeal the executive manager's decision of not allowing him or her to be there? And so if you want to provide for some checks and balances, I think the best way to go is through the amendment that's being offered. I mean, what we're trying to do is make this work, not make it not work or just go full steam ahead so that it can be put in a budget, it can become law, and it's not implementable because there's no due process for anyone denied to be up there at the airport. And we're dealing with public property, we're not dealing with private real estate where one individual can just decide what kind of business he wants to be operating out of their space. That's public property, and if we can accept that, then we can accept that there should be an appeals process for those denied the same access to that space.
Thank you very much, Senator Rispicio. I have Senator Ogden.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. Mrs. Speaker, I'd like to, I guess, hold my overall endorsement of the amendment only because of the transition into a governing board, because certainly that's an issue that I may have. I think the delegation and the identification of the space that will be utilized for this program should be provided and identified by the executive manager, but how the program is administered in terms of the selection, I certainly concur with the sponsor of the amendment, providing an appeals process. Who are we trying to assist in the establishment of this incubator program at the airport authority? Is it the airport, or is it the incubator business, the entrepreneur? And keep in mind that a lot of these incubator businesses and entrepreneurs are startups. They start off with, let's say, maybe even $5,000 if they're lucky, to be able to sell some of their products, and then they start building up from there to a small business, to be perhaps on the larger scale of a small business. They don't have all the financial resources to go up and say, okay, I'm going to have to yield to the decision of the airport authority, but I think there's some inequity in terms of the selection of these other vendors versus giving me that opportunity. So I believe that the idea of providing an appeals process for some of these small incubator businesses, should they not be extended in their eyes equity in terms of the selection and giving them that opportunity to also sell some of their products or to have a retail space at the airport, certainly is a concern that I have, because these are really small businesses, and obviously, they don't have the financial resources to hire an attorney immediately and make sure that they address any potential appeals through a different venue. So I think that the sponsor of the amendment, Mr. Speaker, certainly has an excellent thought in terms of, if we're going to start up this program at the airport, let's start it up correctly. Let's create and provide for an opportunity for incubator businesses to be accommodated at the airport to sell their Guam-made products, but should their perception be that there was inequity in the selection of some of the vendors, let's give them at least an appeals process before they have to go out and actually hire an attorney that could exhaust all of their resources before they even become a very successful entrepreneur and business. So I certainly support that component in terms of the establishment of the appeals process, but I still need to look at how the language will be proffered in terms of transitioning from an advisory board to a governing board, because certainly, I think that the issue that was brought up by the primary mover of the amendment, that we don't want two major conflicting entities, is a legitimate issue, but we need to focus on the program. And if the program is in support of small businesses, then let's give them that appeals process, and it's an excellent idea. I stand in support of that concept. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Ogden. Any other speakers on the amendment? Senators Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In a very valuable dialogue with the proffer of the overall amendment, there is a suggestion on where we can place this language that would be more fitting, and so I would like to withdraw my amendment and have the opportunity to proffer a new amendment.
All right. On the motion for the author to draw his amendment to attach it to Section 1404B, no objection. Amendment was drawn. Senators Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to, in consultation with the author of the amendment, I would like to add that same language that was originally going to be added at the end of subsection 1404B to instead be added to the end of subsection 1403.
Okay. So the amendment then is to add the language for the appeals process under Section 1403B as a last sentence, and that is that the rules and regulations shall include, basically then, shall include an adjudication process to address appeals relative to the determination made by the executive manager in the administration of the program.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. On that amendment? Wait, Senator Ogden?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. Obviously, you know, I'm in support of the amendment, Mr. Speaker, but there are times when, in fact, not enough emphasis is placed on timelines in terms of establishing and adopting rules and regulations. So perhaps if we can say, incorporate within 180 days of the enactment of this provision, that these rules and regs be formulated. Otherwise, we may have a program that's in the books that with excellent intentions, but the rules and regs are not properly promulgated within a reasonable timeframe. So, Mrs. Speaker, I'd like to move that, I was just instructed by the other speaker to withhold any idea or suggestion until we pass his amendment, so I'll yield to that. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
All right. So on the amendment by Senator Nicholas to add that, I have Senator Rispicio and then the Speaker Wampat.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that's a more appropriate place to put it, and I appreciate that there's some kind of meaningful discussion to get us to an end here. Along with the amendment, I think we should also consider saying that the program shall not start unless the rules and regs have been promulgated, because too often we see that we can have a dual approach where our program will get started, and here you're giving all, the amendment gives all the authority to one individual. I can see them setting up these concessions throughout the airport, and then at the same time, moving forward with the rules and regs, and then they'll just say that they never got around to doing the rules and regs. So I like to tie it up somehow where the program shall not commence until the rules and regs have been officially adopted by the airport authority, and so I make that as an amendment to the amendment.
Okay. So to the, you wish to amend that to 1403B?
Yes.
Yes, as amended.
And so if we do this amendment to the amendment, then Senator Ogden's concerns of having a timeline, it'll just take care of itself.
Okay. So the amendment would be then to add, "rules and regs shall be promulgated no later than 180 days after enactment, and program shall not commence until after the adoption of the rules and regulations." Is that the proper issues that you wanted to address in that? Yes. All right. No objections? On the amendment as amended. All right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have a question, because, you know, as the two gentlemen, the two mics were discussing as to where maybe this would best fit this entire amendment here. It's still, I mean, there's a process now that would be provided, an adjudication process, but it didn't say, though, I mean, relative to determinations made by the executive branch, where, who above the executive manager, rather, would they appeal to? I still don't see where that's going to be, because I thought that it would be then maybe the airport board, but I don't see that language here at all, although I overheard the conversation that that's who it will be, but it needs to be reflected here. But nobody, maybe, but some of the parameters can actually be determined here right now by saying that shall, which shall include an adjudication process to address appeals relative to determinations made by the executive manager in the administration of this program. So really, the executive manager determines a lot of things here, makes, you know, all these final decisions. So if there's a vendor who would like then to appeal that decision of the executive manager, where do they go? This doesn't address that, and that's what I'm trying to ask. So I don't know who's going to be able to answer the question, the mover of the amendment, or the mover of the amendment to the main amendment, or the mover of the main amendment, either one of the mics.
We have a question by the speaker. I'm going to ask Senator Nicholas to yield to that question, being the mover of the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can see how there's some ambiguity there that the speaker is a little concerned with. I would make the assumption that because the language there specifically states that it will require an adjudication process for appeals relative to the determinations made by the executive manager, that typically in any appellate process, you always go to the next highest level of authority, which above the executive manager would be the airport board. But the speaker is correct, that that language is not specifically stated. I wouldn't be objectionable to just clarifying that in any amendment that she may be interested in proffering.
All right. So Speaker, Senator Nicholas has clarified his thoughts on the amendment of who would that be and how would that be determined. You have the floor back, and if you wanted to make a determination of who that appeals board should be, that will be, where the rules and regs will be developed for, then I would believe that I would entertain that motion at this time.
So I'm trying to figure out now procedurally whether this can be done, because it'll be a third amendment. I don't know, I'll go ahead and say it, and then you can make the call, where it says to, "the adjudication process to address appeals to the GIAA board relative to," and then that way, it'll be very clear that where it's going to go.
So the speaker's making an amendment to amend the adopted amendment to 1403, and that is that it would be?
Appeals to the GIAA.
To the GIAA board.
Yes, relative to. I think it will fit.
Okay.
If you accept it.
On the amendment, to have that be the GIAA board? No objections? That amendment carries. Any other? Senator Rispicio?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, given that we felt to garner enough votes for the Nicholas amendment to strike Section 1406 out, and given that there's no funding source and there's no cap, I move that after the $10,000, we add a new sentence, "such funds shall come from GITA's operating budget and shall not exceed $100,000 throughout the inception of this act." And so that way, we're identifying that the money for these grants will come from GITA's operating budget and that we cap it $100,000, and if it's so successful, we can always come back and increase that amount in the next year's budget, since we like to do these things within the budget, or we can just do it anytime throughout the next year. And so I want to give this a chance, and I want to make sure that those concerns that I've raised and others have raised are really taken into consideration and that we identify the funding source, and it's, again, it's permissive. It's not saying we're getting it from GITA's budget. We're saying if they really want to do this and they develop a grant program, they get it from GITA's operating budget, and it shall not exceed $100,000 throughout the inception of this act. And so it's very clear that we're capping it at $100,000.
All right. On that amendment? Any discussions? No discussions? No objections? Amendment carries. Any other discussion on the main amendment? Madam Speaker?
And I'm glad that that went through then, that kind of helps. But what I'm wondering too, again, is that I asked my colleagues that up to $100,000 that could, will be made available, could be made available, that I really would like to see then that a portion of this, a percentage of this, actually be awarded to vendors with a disability, and that will be my amendment. So about maybe, you know, 20% at least, so that it's an opportunity to get them started, whatever that is, 20% of that, to persons, vendors who are persons with a disability.
Is that the grant or the vendor kiosk be 20%? The grant? Okay. So the amendment by the speaker that she's offering is that of the grants issued and approved, 20% shall be reserved for or awarded to persons with disabilities. On that amendment, Senator Limtiako? And then Senator Ogden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I definitely support the amendment, but I would just like to add some language in there that if the funds are not utilized by these, if the set aside for the 20% is not utilized, that it does be made available to other applicants at one point in time. So I... So, I definitely don't mind the 20% set aside for persons with disabilities, but I do want the grant money to go to those that otherwise would be able to utilize it in the event that a business person with a disability does not seek the funding. So, could we modify the language such that it had a certain timeline, in the event that it doesn't become utilized, that it's made available?
What timeframe are we looking at, maybe?
I'm going to add, just ask for a short recess. We're kind of drifting away from having these amendments in writing, so that we get all the intentions correctly, and I want to make sure that we do that. So, I'm going to ask the Speaker and Senator Limtiaco to quickly work through a written amendment to address those issues. So, just a short break. Madam Speaker?
Thank you very much again, Mr. Chair. The amendment that I have will be for Section 1406, after Senator Rispio's amendment that had passed, and the language, and I have it here written, is that $20,000 in grant, grants awarded be given to persons with disabilities.
All right. On that amendment? No objections? Amendment carries? Any other speakers?
Can I, just one moment again, please?
Yes.
If I may, on Section 1406, when you go to the second line, "We jointly developed a grant program for businesses participating," I have the language which I made reference to with a legal counsel to cite, that then, I want just grant programs for businesses and qualified participants of the Individuals with Significant Disabilities Vending Act as described in, and I have the citation of that that can be put here.
All right. So, the Speaker has requested that the additional amendment with regards to the citation of the program for individuals with disabilities be added to the second line of Section 1406 after businesses...
And qualified participants of the Individuals with Significant Disabilities Vending Act, and it gives the actual citation in GCA.
All right. And you have that in writing to get to the clerk?
Yes.
Any objections? No objections? Amendment carries. Any other speakers on the amendment as amended? Senator Limtiaco, did you want to close on your main motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just want to thank my colleagues for participating in making this bill a better bill, and for the leeway in adding it to the budget bill, as I do believe that if successful, that it will grow revenues into our budget and allow us to meet some of our obligations that are coming in the future, Mr. Chair. So, the whole idea is just to open up opportunities for our small businesses, specifically those that participate in the Made in Guam Product Sale Program, and to just give them the opportunity and access to the 1.3 million visitors that visit our island every year, and hopefully that it generates tax revenues into our government to help us fund some of the areas that have either been underfunded, or some of the debt obligations that we will need to incur in the next fiscal years. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Limtiaco.
And, Mr. Chair, I withdraw my objection.
All right.
Yeah. Given the evolution of the amendment, I withdraw my objection.
All right. So, the, there was an objection initially offered or lodged on the main amendment, and that Senator Rispio, and who has now requested and informed the body that he's withdrawn his objections, and no objection to withdrawing that. Senator San Nicholas, you still have, did you have any additional comments, Senator San Nicholas, that you can close? Then I'm going to send, recognize Senator Limtiaco for the additional amendment. You had that, one more?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, fear not, fear not. Mr. Chair, the next amendment to add a Section 28 to the miscellaneous provisions is just to change, add a new subsection to 3126 of Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, just to allow for the two amendments to be consistent with one another. And that extends a 50% discount on the business license for those participating in the program.
Okay. Speaker Wampat?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I did, I had asked, of course, the mover of this amendment, because then what it is is that, when you really look at the two different titles, and I just don't want any confusion, I suppose, when we research this, I mean, of course, this is not our job to do this, but at the same time, we want to make sure that, yes, we do have the correct citations. And one of two things, of course, that could be done on Page 2, which is Section 1405, is that either we take all those sections and put it right under this new Title 11, or everything stays actually now with Title 12. And so, I think that that maybe could be a matter that could be decided by legal counsel, rather than having two separate, having the same subject matter and the same language in two separate titles. You understand where I'm coming from?
No.
You're having a Title 11 and a Title 12, and it's under the tax code, so whether it should be all in one, or both. I'm just asking the question whether maybe legal counsel could guide us on this particular amendment?
All right.
In terms of how it is going to be, of course, cited in our GCA.
Or where it's going to be placed in the GCA. Okay. So, wouldn't the compiler, isn't the compiler usually allowed to do that, to, no?
Because you say what you want to do.
Okay. Sure.
Because, yeah, because once we say specifically, the compiler can't pick and choose.
All right.
The compiler will put it exactly the way it is written, and cited by law.
So, the question by the Speaker is that should, should we consider, I guess a question is, should we consider where this goes in the code? Should it be in Title 12 or Title 11, I guess?
Well, Mr. Chairman, a point of information, just to clarify the Speaker's concern, the most recently passed amendment from Senator Limtiaco includes the exact same language in Subsection 1405, and so this new amendment that he's proffering is an amendment to Title 11, and the question from the Speaker is whether or not there is in fact a need for the same language to be addressed twice, or does the language in Subsection 1405 suffice to render this other amendment unnecessary?
All right. We'll just get a short recess then, while we kind of clear that question with the, on the amendment? All right. On the amendment, Speaker, can you consult with the legal counsel on that while I listen to Senator Uggins?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Just, I guess, a concern that I have, Mr. Speaker, in terms of how the language is presented, each business participating in the Made in Guam incubator program shall only pay one half of the total amount payable for the business license, rather than perhaps rephrasing it where this, where businesses participating in the Made in Guam incubator program shall, it leaves a negative taste that there's still an outstanding payable of 50%, rather than saying the fee shall be 50% of the established business license. That's one concern that I have, Mr. Speaker. And the other aspect is, now, will this provision be applicable to every single business out there? Why only those that are given an opportunity at the AB Wampat International Airport? And I ask that question, because in this case, they are ready by virtue of the amendment that was just passed, they're given a reduction in the fee that they would otherwise pay at the airport facility. So, they're given that reduction, then they're given the 50% fee reduction in terms of the business license, but what about all these other businesses that solely provide products that are made in Guam? So, that's another issue that I'd like to bring the attention of the body, Mr. Speaker. But, again, it goes back to my original concern about the idea that there may be a 50% payable that still do, rather than we just need to couch the language so that, in fact, it's clear that the fee assessed for this particular business participating in this program shall only be 50% of the established regular fee. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggins. I'm going to ask, did I see anybody, did I see your hand up, Senator? Okay. Speaker Wampat?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I've consulted with a legal counsel, and, of course, it's up to everyone to decide on this, because on the amendment that we had just passed, which is Section 1405, where the same language exists, which is under Incentives A, that that really could just be deleted and have this section under Title 11 stand. However, I know the author prefers to keep it on, but, you know, it's just, to me, of course, it's just cleaner for the research of this particular section under the tax code, because that's where, you know, yes, and that's why, I guess, he's having that amendment, so...
So, where do we, is the...
Because the thing is, is that maybe might be too much of a trouble to, again, notwithstanding the House rules, go back to the amendment that we just passed, and maybe it's just too much trouble, so...
All right.
I'll leave it as it is.
All right. Okay. So, so, we need to dispose of this amendment. So, there's, so, Speaker, you're not, you're not making a motion, you're not making, all right? Okay. Senator Uggins, I know you raised some concerns. Did you wish the author of the amendment to yield to that question, or? Yes? Okay. Senator Limtiaco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I agree that if we do have a consensus that the language does need to be clarified, so that it says the fee shall be one half, I'm fine with that amendment.
All right. So, Senator Uggins?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and to the sponsor of the amendment, thank you very much for yielding to that consideration. It can be phrased, Mr. Speaker, shall be 50% of the amount of the cost of a business license, period. And then, and then continue on, needed to transact business at the AB Wampat. So, their license would be 50%, and that would establish the fee structure, rather than shall pay 50% of the payable amount.
Okay. Shall...
So, to the... So, to the --
So, strike the word "only."
Shall be one-half.
Shall be one-half.
Of the fee for a business license.
Of the fee for the business license. I just want to make sure I get, okay. All right. So, on the amendment, to the amendment by Senator Uggan?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
No objections? Amendment carries? Okay. The next amendment? Senator Munya Barnes?
Mr. Speaker, if I may, I'd like to add a new section to Chapter 13. And as it, as this amendment would read, it's in reference to the income tax refund status reporting. And if I can, Mr. Speaker, or Mr. Chair, it has three items, A, B, and C on it, and I know it was passed out to our colleagues, and it says, "Income tax refund status reporting," and then subitem I, A, "Beginning with the month ended September 2013, the Director of Revenue and Taxation shall submit a written report and an electronic Microsoft Excel file to the Speaker of the List of Turin, Guam, and the Office of Finance and Budget no later than October 15, 2013, of the status of income tax refunds, and shall utilize the template design in Appendix Two segregated by the individual and corporate income tax refunds. Such reports shall include all the required data included in the template design in Appendix Two, which shall report such required data for tax years 2004 through 2012. And then on subitem B, the Director of the Revenue and Taxation shall update the report on a monthly basis and shall submit a written report and an electronic Microsoft Excel file to the Speaker of the List of Turin, Guam, and the Office of Finance and Budget no later than the 15th of each month, which shall include the data reported in subsection A of this section with the updated data for tax year within the current fiscal year. And C, Mr. Speaker, is the Guam compiler shall codify this section as part of the Guam Code Annotated. This has happened in the past. It stopped for a while, and I've attached the appendix to show my colleagues how it should be done, and I hope my colleagues consider this amendment as it relates to reporting it to the legislature, so we can get update of what has been given out.
I have Senator Duñez on the amendment.
Yeah. Mr. Speaker, I just would like to ask if the author and the proffer of this amendment would give us a little bit more detail as to the reason and necessity of this amendment. I'm not necessarily opposed to it at this time. I just really kind of want to understand what the purpose is and what it tends to do.
Let me, this is a report we used to get from the Department of Revenue and Taxation, and it was a report that we had been, we've worked with in the past with OFB, and they're more familiar with the actual report itself, so may I ask OFB to speak to that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Duñez.
The main purpose of this report is so that it shows what the refunds that have actually been paid as well as the liability. So, if you look at all the reports that have been submitted this year at the SES meetings, all those reports show is what's outstanding as far as liability, but it doesn't show what's been paid by tax year. So, what this will do is it'll give us both of those aspects of it, what's been paid by tax year and what's due to be paid by tax year. And that's the purpose for the report.
Okay, Chris, so, basically, this is something that should be in their database anyways, yeah?
Yes. Yes, it should be, because, you know, all the checks that are sent out are in the reports that Rev and Tax has to track who they pay and what they've paid out. So, we've not been getting the actual amount paid out by tax year, we've been getting the liability owed by tax year. So, we just want the two numbers to come together.
Okay. And this is just for more detailed information? Budgetary purposes or accountability?
And maybe for better provisioning language in the future.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Senator Ada?
Just a quick question. If the mover of the amendment would clarify, I noticed we made specific mention here that the electronic report shall be in Microsoft Excel file. I'm just, I mean, wouldn't it be, we want electronic, we want it sent electronically in a spreadsheet fashion, but if they're not using Microsoft Excel, why are we limiting them to that? Unless we want it to be able to copy and paste and to analyze.
Yes, that's exactly the purpose. The database system that we use in OFB and the legislature uses is an Excel database system.
And if in the following years, Microsoft Excel becomes obsolete and then another software, so then, what do we, I mean, or maybe then we should put language here to the effect, or succeeding software or whatever. But, I mean, it's, I just raised that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. All right. Speaker Wampat?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. On the same lines, of course, with the Microsoft Excel, we just passed legislation now to allow for Rev and Tax and Department of Administration, because they need to be able to communicate, and that's the Power 7. And what that would do is that, at least from our understanding and discussions with them, is that as soon as they get this information, it should immediately update all of the information. They'll be talking to each other. They've even indicated that it should be made available, similar as the AS400, should be available to OFB. So, I'm wondering whether, because of that sign into law, where, I mean, I'm not sure, but I think that we should indicate that through that Power 7 system, that software, that it be made available or accessible to not just Rev and Tax, DOA, BBMR, and OFB.
The Power 7 system, from my understanding, again, Speaker, the Power 7 system is confined to the collections, and so, this basically allows Rev and Tax to redact any private information, so it's only the amounts we're talking about. And so, I think that we've been able to work with this format in the past, Rev and Tax has been able to work with us this format in the past, and at this time, these are the database programs that we're using, that they're using as well, and that we're compatible with this. If we find that the Power 7 system is able to provide any compatibility with that, we have no problems, and we'll work with them on that. The Office of Finance and Budget will. Okay? All right. On the amendment? No objections? Amendment carries? The next amendment I have is, Senator, let's stay in, let's stay in Chapter 12, correct? Or no, inch. Chapter 13? I have Senator Tonyada.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'd just like to make an amendment to, on line 27, page 172, to line one on page 173, to the failure to submit, starting at failure to submit any reports by the required deadline, and this section shall result in a $250 fine per missed deadline for the Director of the Department of Administration, which shall be deposited in the GDOE Interscholastic Sports Program. And also, that's also found on page 174, lines five through eight, for the Director of Bureau and Budget and Management Research, page 178, lines 12 to 15, 24 to 27, page 179, 11 to 15, and one, page 182, lines 24 to 27, and anywhere else that is so referenced. And, Mr. Speaker, I, Mr. Chair, you know, I understand that, you know, failure to submit, it's going towards a good cause, which is the GDOE Interscholastics Program, but, you know, we have, there are so many reporting requirements that are in place, and what we don't want to do is that we don't want to have anyone rush to submit a report so that they don't get a fine because of non-submittal, and we just want to make sure that when they do submit it, that it's submitted accurately and on time that they can do it, and not penalize them for something that is beyond their control, whether it's inclement weather or whether we're closed for a reason or whatever it may be. But, I just moved to make that amendment.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. Just as a note, this was placed in these bills at my request, knowing that there's only one other board that faces these fines, and they haven't missed a report since the fines are in there, and we thought would give them an incentive. We haven't received reports for almost 60 days for some of these departments and agencies on this, and we thought this might be incentive enough to get them to comply, and you'll see the reports up there in terms of, you know, where they're at. But, I'll entertain the motion, and I'll call for a vote. Oh, I'm sorry, I had, may I apologize, I did see Speaker Wampat's hand first and then the Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I, you know, I can understand where the mover of this amendment is coming from, but, you know, we've always really had, you know, shortages, of course, to be able to help interscholastics, and we've been using, yes, the Healthy Futures Fund, and the numbers supposedly should be lower because if, you know, people are smoking and more or less people are smoking, but, and I agree with that, is that, you know, we request for these things, and there are never really any consequences to this. I mean, I know, we can't go and arrest anyone for not doing this, we can't shame them to death, you see, for not doing this, but, you know, as government officials, it's important that they do this, and this, you're right, will be an incentive, is that if they don't, then they know then that it is going to go to really a good cause, which is interscholastics sports program for our public school children, and I, I mean, you know, $250, this is pocket change for some of these places, so, as much as I love my dear colleague, I love interscholastic sports more.
Thank you very much, Speaker Wampat. Mr. Varg, Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chairman. Had I known you were putting this in, I would have included the hospital. They've not, I mean, we were called back in because of the fact that the hospital was in supposedly, you know, flatlining and in dire need of assistance. Had the hospital been complying with Senator Roy's requirement that they file on a monthly basis, we would know that they were having problems. And when I pointed it out to him, the general manager, or whatever he's, position he has up there, in June, he posted it once. He hadn't posted it since he got there in September. He ignored it for seven or eight months. When I called him on it, he posted it, and then when I went to the meeting last week and I embarrassed him in front of his board, he posted July, but August is still not that. But, that's beside the point. At some point, there has to be some kind of penalty for it, otherwise, they just ignore us and leave us in the dark and not knowing what, that they're flatlining, you know? It's just, either keep us advised or then just die.
Thank you very much. I have Senator Yamashita and then Senator Rispio.
Thank you, Speaker Ben. I certainly agree, totally agree, that accountability and responsibility are critical aspects of leadership, and it must be upheld. But, I also think that you've got boards in place who need to be the ones to hold these people accountable, so they are the ones who need to do their jobs and pay attention to all of the requirements that are in front of them. I also think that in some of our agencies, I know they really don't have adequate resources or staffing, and so, it's kind of difficult for them to get everything. You know, there was an issue, I was trying to work with DOA, and this one person kept saying he was the only one doing all of this different work. Now, whether or not that's true, I don't know, but he was pleading this case, and he seemed very sincere about it. And so, the $250 really would help interscholastics, but the $250 really might be a lot of money for some of these folks. So, I would say the way we really do need to address the accountability or lack of responsibility is to ask the governor, excuse me, ask the governor to talk to all of his boards and his councils and his directors and say, "This is your job. This is what you're going to have to do, and you're going to have to get it done," so that we can stop talking about how we're not getting our job done. It's getting kind of tiring to always say, "Well, where's this and where's that?" And so, the, I don't think the $250 is really going to be an incentive, but I do think that it is saying to everybody, if this is what you need to be able to do, then you really do need to be able to do it. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I support the amendment.
Thank you very much. Senator Rispio.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chair. Ms. Chair, I don't support the amendment, and if we're going to tell them that this is their job, they have to do it, and then recognize it's their job, they have to do it, and say, "Oh, well, you didn't do it," I understand. And so, Mr. Chairman, we also have another law that's in the books that requires the governor to do a report to the legislature on any efforts he's made with reorganizing the government of Guam. And so, we even went as far as saying that if he doesn't comply with that law, and so, if you, for example, back then, he did a press release saying that he reorganized the Department of Land Management and saved potential savings of about $200,000. But, what we see too often happen in the government of Guam and the executive branch is, is they would transfer from one agency to the other, and those positions they transferred out, they would recognize it as a savings, but yet, the overall bottom line doesn't, it never changes. And so, what, we, you know, we said that he has to do that, he didn't do that, we came in subsequent to that, and then we did a deappropriation mechanism that says, "Failure to submit these reports shall result in a 5% deappropriation to the governor's office budget." Now, I would like to publicly ask at this time if the Office of Finance and Budget and yourself can assist in figuring out how much money should have been deappropriated because of his ignoring that particular law. And so, that particular law, Mr. Speaker, was really important because, because if the governor's claiming through press releases that he's reorganizing the government, he's saving all of this money, what our law would have done, if he's following it, it would have deappropriated any savings resulting from any reorganization efforts. And so, that trigger would occur when he submits the reports to the legislature, but he's not submitting the reports to the legislature, still claiming that they're savings when none of those savings have been deappropriated, and as a result of not getting these reports, we're seeing the appropriated levels to the executive branch increase rather than decrease. And so, I think we need to be very serious when we say that these reports are required, and this is something that we all did through the Office of Finance and Budget when we want to have this information so we can, we can have the kind of transparency that this branch of government deserves so that the, that the budget projections can be more accurate based on those information. And so, previous administrations have been complying with these reporting requirements, and now, all of a sudden, as you pointed out, they're not complying. And they're not complying, and if we remove this penalty, even more so. And so, so, along with the lines of stating my objections to the amendment, I'm again asking if the Office of Finance and Budget can try to help me execute the current law that would deappropriate monies from the governor's office budget because he didn't comply with the law relative to any reorganization efforts. And if any reorganization efforts didn't result in any savings, then he simply should have just submitted a report to the speaker saying that for this month, there was reorganization efforts or there wasn't any reorganization efforts, and we didn't realize any savings. So, you know, he just has to comply, and if he doesn't comply, there has to be some consequences. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Rispio. Any other speakers on the amendment? Madam Speaker?
Yes, only because, you know, I was here at the time when Speaker Forbes was the speaker and the governor was OFB chair, and it was, the body did something like, not like this, but even more far-reaching and very creative, is that the language in that budget was that if there's failure of that department to submit the reports, that the director and deputy director were personally deputy director were personally liable and that 10% of their salary was going to be reduced as a result of failing to turn those reports in. But in this case, we want the money to go to interscholastics. But just to let everybody know, of course, the new ones and naturally, I'm, I'm old, but, but that's what had happened in one, one budget year.
Senator Minaj Barnes, did you wish to speak on your amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Speaker, I just want to say for the record that I was in that legislature when, when we did do that far-reaching measure to make the director and deputy director accountable for their actions or their negligence or their inaction of not doing that. And, and it really, it really put them to their feet because as Legislative Secretary today, I wanted to say that for the record, that we do get reports and all the autonomous agencies do it, even the mayor's office does it and they, they even doing it for their non-appropriated funds. But I do want to ask a question because it did come to my, my attention. Is it the $200 fine per missed deadline? That's not daily, that's just for that quarterly time, right?
Yeah, per report.
So it's, so I just want to state for the record that it's, it's really only $250 for that director per quarter. So you take the per quarter times four, that's how much they, that, that their salary would be or, yeah.
Yeah, total.
Total will be affected. And I'm just saying that we've done this. I don't know why we've never codified this, but I wouldn't want to, I just want to say if you, if you can't do the job then of reporting and giving that, it was, it was the government who asked for the accountability and transparency and said that this legislature was never stepping up to the plate to give that transparency. And, and I'm just saying that it's not $250 per day, it's per missed deadline. And instead of taking it from your personal account and just deducting it, it will go to the sports program at DOE. So, huh, I don't know.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other speakers on the amendment? None? There was an objection to the amendment. All in favor of the amendment? Please, three. Please raise your hands. Yeah. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Motion fails. Okay. The next amendment I have. Senator Rodriguez, can, can I get you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, just a very technical amendment on Section 15 to correct the numerical from the sum of $345,000 to $115,000, just to correct that on subitem A and also on subitem B to correct it from $345,000 to $230,000.
All right. This is in Chapter 2, 3, Part 2, Section 15. It's to correct the numbers so that they match with the spelling of the numbers versus the actual numerical citation. So, on the amendment, no objections. Senator Speaker Wampat?
Oh, Tom, Senator Ada? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm Mr. Chairman. This amendment that I'm proffering is to amend the, the provision regarding the acquisition of property on, for the Tezen Parkway. Earlier, we had appropriated, well, and the provision provides for a $1.3 million appropriation. And the amendment that I'm making is to add Lot 2087-1 to the other two lots that are, that can be purchased with this $1.3 million. The, the reason why this amount is, or this amendment's being put in is because Lot 2087-1 has already been probated and so it's ready to go. Lot 2097 and 2085 have yet to be probated, at least according to Mr. Art Clark. And so they're just asking that, that that lot be included and that also then, I believe the appraised value for this comes within that $1.3 million. And so if for some reason then, we get any ex, well, we get any excess funds, that, that money should be made available also for the purchase of previous lots that may not have been able to be purchased from this, from this provision.
All right. On the amendment by Senator Ada, no objections. The amendment carries. I have Speaker Wampat, I guess?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have an amendment that I'd like to proffer and it's, it was actually from a bill that was heard '95 and then it was transformed into Bill Number 100 and then transformed even further. But because we all, every, every member here and including the governors, we are concerned about our hospital and Medicaid. So therefore, and the Vice Speaker has given an impassioned speech the other day about wanting to be able to put money into the Medicaid program and by doing so, we would be able to bring in double the amount that will be brought in. And what this would do is provide a bridge to the public health and that what would happen, these are these cheated monies that originally in an original bill will be deposited into the Income Tax Reserve Fund, but as a bridge now to be able to help public health, the Medicaid program and the hospital, is that this will be the bridge for it and upon their loan that they're able to make, they'll be able to reimburse this back to the Income Tax Reserve Fund.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I have Senator Duñez and then Senator Rodriguez.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to speak in full support of this amendment. Mr. Chairman, you know, the other day, when my good friend and I were having a spirited discussion and we were told to take it outside, and we did. And, you know, I really want to commend the, the short-term and long-term solutions that we have identified for the hospital in working together on this issue. Of course, the short-term is what's been contained in here now that we can, you know, have the authority and the inability to work within this fiscal year and the like and, and the chapter that was identified by yourself, Mr. Chair, and others. And then, of course, you have the long-term, which would be when these is-cheated funds just for this fiscal year, the balances of which, outside of what we've already passed in public law during this session, Mr. Chair, will be identified for the matching requirements and really bring much more long-term stability. And as we have agreed also, Mr. Chair, in the interim, finding out, you know, what the management needs to do to straighten up what's going on up there as well. So I, I truly, you know, am in support of this and, and really am, am really excited about the, the short-term and long-term planning that this legislature has put and the efforts forward to, to really go above and beyond, making sure the hospital can be stable and, and our people understand that our efforts are definitely there. And so we need to have those efforts matched after we do this. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to support this very critical amendment.
Thank you very much, Senator Duñez. I have Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'd like to, first of all, commend the Speaker, Senator Barnes, for moving this amendment and also my other colleagues for moving this amendment forward. What this does, you know, is provide the Medicaid program additional local funds to match, to be able to access these, these, these funds from the federal government. And, you know, this appropriation here allows the, the administration to, to tap into it for not just 2014, but also for 2013 claims. And in addition to what is already included in this substitute version of, of the bill that you have before us, this is really a victory for the hospital, a victory for our people. And, and so, you know, we all know that there's about $268 million in federal funds available to Guam pursuant to PACA. And this money runs out in 2019. If we don't, if we're not able to, to match 45% of these funds, then we lose it after 2019. And so, you know, I, again, I commend the Speaker and I ask really all of us in here to, whenever we could and have the opportunity to identify local funds, that it be invested into Medicaid because it's a good investment. We, we get 55% to every dollar and it will go a long way in, in the delivery of healthcare in our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Rodriguez. Chair now recognizes Senator Ogden. Then Senators Siniklas is next.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, actually, I had a couple of questions that I'd like to request if by any chance the mover of the amendment can yield.
Please direct your question to the Chair and then the Chair will ask the mover of the amendment.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I guess in this particular case, it's, it's not enumerated as to exactly what the amount would be that could conceivably be as-cheated to the government of Guam. So that's one of the first questions that, that I would like to inquire about. I know that the figure has been thrown around the room amongst a number of senators, but just for purposes of the public, just so that they understand what conceivably could be the amount. Secondly, Mr. Speaker, if I, if the sponsor of the amendment could yield, I noticed that the timing is somewhat restrictive in terms of as-cheated before the end of the fiscal year. Now, what if in fact, in actuality, all of the, the accounting documentation is not finalized until subsequent to September 30th? So I don't want us to tie ourselves to that particular provision. So I would like to ask the sponsor and the mover of the amendment if she would be willing to, to yield to at least that particular, the extension of that timeline so that if in fact it's not as-cheated by September 30th, if it's as-cheated on October 4th, then this same provision would be applicable and the funds would actually go where this body has decided it should go and be applied to.
Madam Speaker, would you yield to that question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My understanding and in communicating very closely with the Department of Administration, and if you really, if you look at the appropriations sections, there are several public laws already in terms of what then we've actually is-cheated. And this is now monies that at the end of September of this year, there will be, right now, they're saying anywhere between $9 to $11 million. There's, they're continually paying these checks out, but the actual amounts will not be known until the end of September. By doing this to be able to assist mental health, of course, and ultimately the hospital, is that when then, that at the end of the month, it will immediately then go into the general fund. And this is above what we have that's currently been indicated as revenues to be appropriated. So what this body then is doing is that we are then putting in the language that as soon then as the end of the month, meaning starting October 1st, then when it goes in, it's immediately appropriated then to, for the use of Medicaid. And the, like I said earlier, as, as much as 900, I mean, 900 million, you're right. We didn't put a dollar amount because hopefully when they start to, to collect for these, then it'll continue to reduce. But nevertheless, there, there's definitely, whatever the balance is at the end of this month, then will be given to the Medicaid program.
Senator Ogden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you also, Madam Speaker. I think just for purposes of public information, just so the public understands that these are additional resources above and beyond the budgeted amount for this fiscal year. So it's not going to create an unbalanced presentation in terms of the overall budget consideration. The second aspect, Mr. Speaker, is it goes back again to the timing and to the good Madam Speaker, the sponsor of the amendment. Line four reads, "And this is cheated to the general fund prior to the end of fiscal year 2013." So that again is, is where I had shared an initial concern as to whether in fact, what if in fact, the documentation, they're not able to complete all of the necessary documentation for all of these funds to be as-cheated to the general fund until subsequent to September 30th of this fiscal year. So we're tying ourselves into that particular timeline and we're just talking about 26, 27 days out rather than allowing that flexibility and making sure that these funds are properly allocated to Medicaid as is being proposed by this amendment. So, Mr. Speaker, if it's okay with the mover of the amendment, Madam Speaker, I think that language really should be expanded so that it provides just a little bit more additional timeline for the achievement of these funds. Because if in fact it's not as-cheated by the close of this fiscal year, then this provision will not be applicable.
It wouldn't cover those funds. The achievement statute has a date of when those funds is-cheated. Only those that is-cheated at this time would be covered by this provision.
But it, but it says, Mr. Speaker, it says, and is available, it says, and what I just said, is as-cheated to the general fund prior to the end of fiscal year 2013.
Right.
So that would be an end date of September 30th, 2013. So what if the funds are actually not as-cheated until the first week of October?
Then that would come.
But then that would defeat the whole purpose of this because what you would provide here, Mrs. Speaker, is the opportunity to utilize those is-cheated funds for allocations or appropriations for fiscal year 13 and fiscal year 14 expenditures under the Medicaid program. So I just wanted to bring that up. And I understand if we feel comfortable with the timeline of the conclusion of the fiscal year, then certainly I'm not going to move for, for an amendment. But I'm hearing that, that you do feel that in fact the language is, is, I guess, efficient to be able to address the appropriation or the reallocation of the $9 million. So just wanted to make sure that there's clarity there because obviously we come back the second week of October and the $9 million becomes available in the next FY, then obviously we may have to come back and make appropriate amendments for the utilization of these funds. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Just to be clear, this amendment would go as a new section at the end of miscellaneous chapter, Chapter 11, okay? Just to be clear. Any other speakers on the amendment? Senators Siniklas, I have him and then anybody else? Okay. Senators Siniklas, you proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, I would also too like to join my colleagues in commending the Speaker for her work in finding additional funding that's going to ultimately benefit the hospital. I do also want to emphasize a point, Mr. Chairman, and that is that the people of Guam are riding to the rescue of the hospital here and now. But that does not ameliorate the need for the hospital to get its financial situation in order. And not only does it need to get it in order over the coming fiscal year, but it needs to get it in order with the projected impact of when the new hospital opens. Right now, you know, we're dumping money into the hospital to keep things going and that is without the presence of that competitor. Every time I drive to drop my little girl off to her nursery, I pass by that new hospital going up. And the first thing that comes to my mind as a lawmaker is how is that going to affect GMH, especially when we're dealing with the crisis that we're facing today? And so here we are, we're finding these rev, these funding sources that are not ongoing and continuous. This is a sheeted money that's not going to be there next year. That number's going to fluctuate up and down depending on what's available. And this $9 million, this $9 million approximately in is-cheated funds could have gone to so many other obligations. We do have throughout this budget bill authorizations for the governor to find money to pay merit bonuses. If the hospital's financial situation was in order today, this $9 million could have gone to pay merit bonuses before the end of the current calendar year. But right now, because we all share the interest of protecting and coming to the rescue of the hospital in its current condition, that $9 million is going there. So the hospital needs to, to understand loud and clear that not only do we need here as policymakers to get a very clear understanding of what its financial condition is currently and ongoing, but we also need to get an understanding of what they project the impact of the new hospital to be on its financial condition thereafter. And this isn't something new that I'm bringing up, Mr. Chairman. I brought this up in multiple hearings before the hospital and I even have a letter here dated May 23rd, 2013, to Mr. Ulrich, the Chief Financial Officer, asking him those exact questions. So the hospital needs to be communicating to us what their condition is currently. They need to be communicating to us what they project their condition is going to be when this competitor emerges. And we need to be able as policymakers to look at the overall financial picture and determine what exactly is going to be the long-term sustainability of the hospital. And if it's going to require an ongoing and continuous appropriation of resources like this, where are we going to find that money? So I just wanted to state that for the record, Mr. Chairman, and thank Speaker again for being able to. for being able to find these funds for the immediate crisis. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Muna Barnes?
Ms. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, as I respect the sentiments of the previous speaker and understand what, what those concerns are and, and why he stated that for the record, I, I just want to take this time now to say, working closely with the speaker and, and having this bill introduced now, working with this amendment, I, I want to thank her for giving me the opportunity to work closely with her and her committee to finding the additional resources needed to give this administration the tools it needs, so it could move on, on making sure that collections are there. If there's an impediment in as far as working the administrative work, that, that, that the employees of, of, of the departments are not held, and, and that they be given the resources they need, the tools they need, to move forward in making sure that the government of Guam receives all the resources. As it relates to what that nine million dollars, this nine million dollars that would be as cheated by the end of September could be used for, the good speaker spoke about it being maybe nine to eleven million, I want to say, yes, it could have been used for other critical financial concerns that could help this government. But again, we, we stepped up to the plate as we did in the past, as we did in giving the government the resources that they need to work closely with the Department of Administration, Department of Revenue and Tax. Again, this august body has stepped up to the plate to look at the crisis that exists before us, even after, I, I share with you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker, that, that even as we talked about the hemorrhaging that was happening at the hospital, this matter had been a topic of discussion for many, many months, and yet, nothing was done. So, I, I say, Mr. Speaker, that this amendment will again assist, this amendment has received bipartisan support. I want to thank my colleagues for getting on the bandwagon and supporting this amendment. And I, I really think that as we continue to give this administration all the resources that it needs to make sure that our government is there to provide for the basic services, this is that tool again. So, I want to thank the good speaker for giving me that opportunity to work closely with her as, as we worked hard to looking, to finding money within the government to help this government. I do want to add an amendment after, I guess, before Section Two, Mr. Speaker, if it could just read, "These funds shall not be subject to the governor's transfer authority."
All right.
This would just give the clarity that it's needed for what the purpose is going into, is, is authorized, is so, would this, this funding would be authorized solely for the expenditure for payment of medical services provided for medical, Medicaid recipients by the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority.
Under the amendment, no objections. Amendment carries. On the speaker wampa, did you want to close? Okay. On the amendment as amended, no objections. Amendment carries. Senator Duñez, did I--
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to proffer an amendment at this time on page one seventy-six, and starting on line sixteen, with the governor's transfer authority, and it will read, Section thirteen, we'll now read, "General Fund Transfer Authority of Imagallah in Guahan unless otherwise restricted." Actually, it's the same language, Mr. Speaker, except for the strike. And so, we go from ten to seventeen percent?
Fifteen.
I was gonna, I had to try. Everybody's awake. Everybody's awake. Sense of humor, sense of humor. Fifteen percent, Mr. Speaker, so the zero is straight out, and it's five.
On the amendment, no, Senator Uggan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I just have a, a couple of questions of inquiry, just so that, so that, in fact, our people understand exactly what the options are. I certainly stand in support of the, the proposed amendment, obviously based on, on some of our previous discussions, but what is the, Mr. Speaker, if you can provide this, I know I initially inquired about it. At the ten percent level, based on the executive branch appropriations, what would a ten percent transfer authority add up to in terms of the governor's tool to be able to move money around to address some of the budgetary requirements for fiscal year fourteen? And then what would that number be at, at the fifteen percent level? Please, Mr. Speaker.
If you'll just give me a couple of minutes, we have that number. As you know, the total appropriation is up to the five ninety, but there are some restrictions already in what he cannot transfer and transfer, so we'll try to pull this number up real quick for you. Ten percent is about eighteen million, and so, add another nine to that.
Ten percent, Mr. Speaker, ten percent of five hundred and ninety?
No, 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 because there are restrictions in the budget of, just like, for example, that nine million we just passed, that's not subject to it. So, about eighteen million for ten percent, and about another twenty-seven for the fifteen percent.
Okay, just so that, so that, you know, when we take a look at this entire budget and we take a look at some of the mechanisms that are being extended to the chief executive to operate the government of Guam and to manage the resources, that this particular provision extending the bot, the transfer authority from ten percent to fifteen percent can conceivably provide that additional flexibility and from eighty million dollars to twenty-seven million dollars. So, so I just hope that everyone understands that for the record, and I, I stand in support of the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggan. Any objections to the amendment? No objections. Amendment carries. Senator Duñez?
So, Mr. Chair, I have one more amendment on page one eighty-four. I notice, I notice my good colleague from Magana Heights is watching me closely. and so, Mr. Chair, on page one eighty-four, we would add a new section twenty-five.
Okay.
And it's, I, I don't have to read it, right?
No.
Okay. Is everybody read it? No objections?
It's an, it's a provision on independent contractors.
It's a provision for independent contractors for the governor's capability of executive direction.
All right. Any objections? Senator Ada?
Mr. Chairman, I just noticed that the information that's to be reported under this provision basically is to say, who did you hire? For me, I think what's important is what services are to be provided by this contractor. So, I would like to make the amendment to add a line E in the data elements to be reported as to service to be provided.
Okay. On that amendment, no objections. The amendment carries. On-- Okay. Okay. Just before, I, I haven't galloped that amendment, but legal counsel has advised the chair that perhaps we want to delete B, just B, because there may be some issues there, so.
I, I was actually not liking that in the original portion, so thank you, Mr. Chair, no objections.
Can you make that amendment?
Yes, I'll make the amendment. At this time, Mr. Chair, if we would, on the new section, delete letter B, date and birth if under age nineteen.
And then re-letter all the other amendments.
And re-letter everything, so yeah, now we have a--
On that amendment, no objections. On the amendment as amended, any objections? No objections. Any other amendments? Senator Lim Tiaco? There being no additional amendments, the chair will take a short recess. All right. The Committee of the House back in session. Senator Rispia?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chairman. When there were no further amendments to the bill, the next thing we heard was an applause from, from all the members of this body, and I echoed those sentiments to thank you and the Office of Finance and Budget, and as well as all members of this legislature, including the governor, the administration, when they were with us at the beginning of this whole process in the Committee of the House. So, being there are no further amendments or no further matters before us on, on Bill Number One dash four dash S, I move that we rise from the Committee of the House on Bill Number One dash four dash S as amended and further substituted in the Committee of the House with all the amendments made intact, and the obvious recommendation based on the applause is to pass.
Okay. On that motion to rise, no objections. Committee of the House now rise. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I wish to report back to the body, and first, I want to congratulate and thank all of my colleagues for the work that has been performed during the Committee of the House on the matter of Bill Number One, Four Dash S. And the committee had concluded its session in the House and has issued a recommendation, has risen and issued a recommendation on the matter of Bill One, Four Dash S, and would now say, move that the Committee of the House has risen, it has recommended that Bill One, Four Dash S as amended and further substitute, as further substituted in the Committee of the House and as amended in the Committee of the House, that it recommends to the body that Bill One, Four Dash S be passed by this legislative body with all of the amendments intact.
On that motion, without any objections, ordered. Okay. Senator Rispia, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we recess till four-thirty this afternoon, and at such time, we should be able to see a portion of the, the budget bill, mainly the one dealing with the small business incubator program up at the airport. That should be in final form, and then the rest of the budget, all the amendments were in written form, and there's some consensus that we vote without engrossment, with the exception of that portion being very, very, I guess, the final version of that, we'd be able to review that in writing. And so, I move that we recess till four-thirty this afternoon.
Thank you. On that motion, without any objections, ordered. The legislature is back in session. Senator Rispia, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, we are in receipt of pages one seventy-two through one seventy-six of the budget bill, and the author of the amendment, Senator Michael Tiaco, has reviewed it, as well as each of us have reviewed it, and found that this to be in order. And so, as we agreed to, we can proceed to vote on the, the budget bill, One, Four Dash S, without engrossment, having received this version, and, and everybody's in agreement that this is what was reflective of what was discussed on the floor. So, we can proceed to the voting floor. Yeah, yeah, one, as amended, one, Bill One, Four Dash S, as amended--
As amended and further substituted in the Committee of the House.
Thank you.
So, we are, and thank you very much for that clarification, explanation. If I can ask the clerk then to please read the title of the bill.
Bill Number One, Four Dash S, as amended and further substituted and further amended in the Committee of the House. Introduced by Committee on Rules, Federal, Foreign, and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, and Electoral Reform. By request of Imagallah in Guahan by Governor of Gu, the governor of Guam in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. An Act Making Appropriations for the Operations of the Executive Legislative and Judicial Branches of the Government of Guam for Fiscal Year Ending September thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. Making Other Appropriations and Establishing Miscellaneous, Miscellaneous and Administrative Provisions.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada?
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan?
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez? Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Lim Tiaco?
Yes.
Senator Lim Tiaco, aye. Senator McCready? Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison?
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Muna Barnes? Senator Muna Barnes, aye. Senator-- Senator Pangolinan? Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Rispichio? Senator Rispichio, aye. Senator Rodriguez? Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklas? Senator Siniklas, aye. Speaker Wampat? Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita? Bill Number 1-4-S received 15 yea votes. No one is absent, and nobody voted? No. It's unanimous. Thank you. The best. Yay, aye. Senator Rispichio, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. First, I want the body to recognize the presence of Vice Speaker Ted Nelson and convey our appreciation for all of his work in the passage of budget.
Mr. Vice Speaker, thank you for joining us.
And so having said that, I move that we adjourn this fourth special session. Synodai.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. We adjourn, synodai.